All right, thank you. All right, welcome to the Town Act and Main Plenary Board Meeting for February 15th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you guys read through your minutes yet?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion we accept the minutes from February 1st as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? All right. All right, we'll start tonight with a public hearing for discussion of proposed amendments to the Town of Act and zoning ordinance.
Which one do you want to look at first?
Want to, uh... Do, I don't know. Either or, they're kind of easy, quick. We'll do the amendment to the zoning ordinance relative to water quality. You want to read them off?
Oh, sure. You can read it. 5.21, water quality protection, 5.21.5. This is the added verbiage. No person shall bury any animal within 100 feet of a natural water body within the shoreland and resource protection districts or within 100 feet of a source of potable water.
Any comments from the public on this one?
Did Jason pass on any of the comments that we had from Warrant and Finance?
I did. They have an email in front of them that I haven't really pointed it out. But they are in front of them right now. So...
Do you want to come back up?
Did you want to discuss your Warrant and Finance comments, or you want me to discuss them for you?
I'll let you discuss it.
Why, thank you.
I'm trying to spread the wealth.
I get that one. I've had a lot of spreading going on lately. All right, so the Warrant and Finance has a recommendation for the 5.21.5. The, they recommend that the verbiage be changed to, no person shall bury any animal remains, no person shall bury any animal remains, comma, or permit their burial, comma, within 100 feet of a source of potable water or within 100 feet of a natural water body within the shoreland and resource protection districts. Like their own burials. And I think you're saying so just so that nobody allows somebody else to bury an animal on their dog?
Well, you forgot the or.
Or permit their...
Or permit.
Sorry, sorry.
It changes the word, it changes the whole sentence.
See, you should have read it yourself.
Yeah. He almost sounds like James Earl Jones, doesn't he?
Well, he's not deep enough.
Right.
Not deep enough, but it's close.
We'll get him there.
You understand the rationale for why the orders change, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Because otherwise you're really omitting wells in the rest of the town. And you're only addressing it for those wells within the shoreland and resource protection.
Right.
That's the reason why they're changed in the order.
And you're not burying an animal, you're burying an animal remains.
Carcass.
Carcass.
I had a dog I'd like to bury one time.
Any comment, public comments on this?
Hi, you know who I am? Steve Ike, 162 East Shore Drive. I'm the driver of this. And my comment is, the verbiage change, it still remains, people cannot bury it near my well or the water. Okay, so I just want to make sure I really understand that because it's wreaked a lot of havoc and it's cost me thousands of dollars. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Does the board want to move on to the next one?
Sure. Joyce.
Sorry.
Joyce, back, she wanted finance. Like a lot of ordinances, is this going to have any teeth in it? I call you up and say, hey, you know, so-and-so just buried their gecko, you know, right next to my well, or I'm on the water, right on the water.
Well, anything in the ordinance has teeth. If it's not supposed to be done, then there's ramifications of it, whether it's just removing it and relocating it. And if you don't do that, then it's like every other ordinance that you don't follow. There's always a ramification to something. If you're not willing to abide by the ordinance, then, you know, it can go as far as having legal involved.
So without saying it's a this or that, it's still, you're going to remain on, I think it's good ordinance right away, first of all, but you're still going to have to remain on people calling you on it?
It's more if somebody has, knows that this issue has happened, they have to provide proof that there's something there, and then unlock just driving around looking for a burial site.
For burial sites? Well, no, you shouldn't do that. But, you know, if Joe Schmo knows it's going to cost him number one, he's going to have to correct it, and he's going to get fined 500 bucks. You know, maybe he'll, that's what I mean by a little bit of teeth, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we move on to proposed amendments to zoning ordinance relative to filling grading or other earthmoving activity. And the changes are in the land use chart. E, filling grading or other earthmoving activity, 500 to 9,999 is now crossed out and changed to 999 cubic yards per year. And F, filling grading or other earthmoving activity more than 10,000 is now crossed out and replaced by 1,000 cubic yards per year. And... We changed something else, didn't we? In the...
I think we removed...
In the village district or something? It should be highlighted on here.
I don't think we changed anything else.
I remember discussing it, but I don't know.
Oh, um...
Yes, F.
Yeah, and, I'm sorry.
Under F, the first column, village area, it was not permitted to have the 10,000, but we're going to make it conditional use, given that we changed it to 1,000. So that, that C should be highlighted on this document.
Thank you for the catch.
Any public comment on this?
Jason passed around the email, then you should have this. What are you going to do about 1,000 cubic, the exact number, 1,000 cubic yards? As we proposed, change, remove, strike out more than, and insert greater than or equal to. Seems like you'll miss that one.
That would make sense.
What?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep.
Christine Alfiero, 115 Moose Pond Road. I don't know exactly all the ordinances about this, but we're talking about water quality and earthmoving.
We're not talking about anything but the ordinance changes.
Okay.
What's in front of you right now.
Okay, never mind then.
Any other comments? Shall we? Anything else?
Yeah.
Oh, you're looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah.
I'm, well, there's no other comments from the public. And I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? All right, that's it for the public hearing tonight.
Do you want to, how does the board want to proceed? Do you want to go into just the greatest practical extent and then deal with the reviews? Or is...
Do you want to just keep going with the review, or?
We're kind of already looking at this.
Yeah, so let's just keep on going with it. You want to, so I actually agree with the, at least the...
Verbiage.
Verbiage from the filling one where equal to or greater than.
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't know how the board feels about that, but that kind of makes sense.
Yeah, I think it clarifies the intent.
Right, I get it.
I think it clarifies the intent.
That was just a hot kick then anyways.
Chris?
Yes.
For Warrant and Finance, will you have any changes you decide to make, made by Tuesday?
We're making them right now.
We're making it right now.
Yeah, right in front of you.
You're good. No matter what they tell me, you're good.
I've heard a lot of bad things lately, so...
Because Tuesday...
You have to have the final draft.
We are up or down.
Okay.
Tuesday.
Yeah, no, we're rolling reading to it when this is on.
I'll submit them to Jen tomorrow. She'll pass them out, she'll email it to everybody.
Yeah, that's great.
But hopefully, you know, I'll have them done on our part, so...
Wonderful, good. And you did catch that, yeah, you did. He's already got it there. The conditional use.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Because I think that was done, but it wasn't changed in that a few years ago. That whole thing was done, I think. But it didn't get, it didn't get in the book.
It was more of a housekeeping thing than...
Right, that's what I thought. Thank you.
All right, so any suggestions from the board on the water quality protection one?
I think it's fine to pretty much go with the new verbiage.
With what they had said, what they suggested?
I don't see why not, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so no person...
Should we say carcass? I kind of like that word, but eh...
Just, just in terms, so I'm just, I'm just looking at the wording or the arrangement of words, because I no kidding, looked at that and looked at, and thought it, and partially thought it meant like the owners, like they're, like if they want to be buried on their own property type of thing. Like I no kidding, like looked at it and thought about it in that sense for a moment. So, like no person shall bury any animal, shall bury or permit the burial of any animal remains, you know? I don't know if I'm just being at the wind here. It's literally just kind of a rearranging of the words.
Mm-hmm. Flipping it.
Just, just to make it 100% clear exactly what the intent is here.
Yeah, just give me a second so I can just...
Yep.
Finish off what I'm doing.
Yep.
What's that?
It says or within the 100.
Chris, would you like clarification rationale?
Yes, sir, if you'd like to come up.
I'm going to pose a scenario to you.
She'll bury any...
The way it was written without the or permit. I come to my neighbor who has a pretty good sized parcel of land, and I say, you mind if I bury my pet? And he says, yeah, sure. In other words, he granted me permission, but he's not burying it, I'm burying it. And I just said, well, this looks like a nice spot, and I don't pay attention to where his well is, but it's within 100 feet. That ordinance doesn't cover it. Whereas if you put in just those couple of words, it covers all scenarios. Both the landowner and anyone that they might have granted permission to bury an animal on their land.
Thank you.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, that's good. Ah, yeah.
Happy with it?
I'm good.
Do we need to vote on accepting the new verbiage?
I think so, yeah. On both of them, right? We got to vote on them.
I think so, yeah. To make it official.
I got it, I'm thinking.
While I'm trying to line up what's on the screen with what we're voting. Not quite there yet. Are we just going directly to this right here, pretty much?
Yeah, the only thing I changed out of that was literally in that little section that says or permit there, I said or, it says or permit the.
Right.
I just noticed that.
That's, that's the only thing, just to...
You want there?
No, I don't, I don't, no, that's good.
The burial?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, uh...
Yeah.
Just in my, in my own head, that's more clear.
Bury or dispose of.
Where did that go? Highlight it straight up.
I don't think anyone's just going to draw a... Get dead animal parts by your will.
Right. Bury, what if I want to burn it?
Oh, on our thing, it wasn't.
You know what I mean? If I want to set up a big fueling fire?
No, on mine, it was seized, it's going the opposite way, see? Right?
So, uh, we were talking, is bury too narrow, or dispose of?
Well, do you think someone's going to drop a bag of dead animal parts next to your well and walk away?
Seen weird things on the side of the road.
Well, on the side of the road.
No, I know.
Right.
These things happen. This is a part of burying, so if somebody just moved it on the ground...
Maybe they...
No, in the open air, or even burn it, is what I was, was the suggestion I said. You guys think that seems over the top, or?
What's that?
Well... I think if someone could just drop a bag of dead animal parts next to your well, get rid of the bag.
You know, does a fire...
Or, and, Andrew's...
Pose concern to the...
I think we're talking more about what you do on your property, not with somebody else. You can't keep somebody from throwing something out the back of their truck.
Well, yeah, but you could say, hey, I could come to Adam's house and say, hey, I'm dropping my dead animal next to your...
You're looking into it too much, right?
What's that?
I think you guys are overthinking.
Yeah, no, we always like, that's what I'm saying.
Don't go that far.
Well, no, you don't think that just adding the phrase, no person shall bury or dispose of any animal remains, makes sense because they could just...
Well, that's, I thought...
Just lay it on, no, what Chris was saying, he had his own thing.
Yeah, he was telling, talking about someone dropping off a bag of parts.
No, that's something else.
That was a different...
No, like what if you wanted to like, you know, like cremate your own kind of thing on your own property, like say, you know, chuck it on a big, on a big bonfire kind of deal, you know?
I don't know, it's your guys' ordinance.
Yeah, but that, no, but that's what, that's what we're talking about, like a, you know, alternate disposal method other than burying.
Yeah.
You know?
Do we care about that?
No, I think it was the burying because of the whole, in my personal opinion, I think it was more or less because of the euthanization and the chemicals that was being on.
Lay it on the surface of the ground, we don't care? I'm just asking.
I don't, I really don't know.
Anybody have a comment from Warrant and Finance about that?
What's your question?
Well, did you hear the, oh, I just...
Say if I just...
Asking the board if we wanted to add in a phrase that said, no person shall bury or dispose of any animal remains. Do we care about that? If they just put it on the ground, it's really fine?
Are we talking?
I don't know. You have to talk to DEP on that one, because that, that would be a surface disposal, you're just leaving it on the ground? I don't know. I don't know how that would be handled. As far as cremation, that would be another DEP thing as far as submissions. That has very little, if anything, to do with water quality, which is what this ordinance change was about.
Right, but laying it on the surface of the ground.
Well, I agree with you there.
That would be very similar to burying it, but not covered by this.
That I don't know. I mean, I would imagine that that would be a DHS matter of fact issue because there flies and disease.
Yeah.
You know, that's just like subsurface waste, waste disposal.
But the word remains, I mean, if you want to overthink it like crazy, there's a dead deer in your backyard, what do you do? According to our, what? Yeah, inland fisheries and all that, you don't touch it. You don't touch it. Nature takes care of it. So I think animal remains will cover what you're saying, because you don't want that somewhere, you know, somebody thinks they should dress the animal. But I think you can overthink it a lot.
Can put? I'm happy with the way it's written.
You like how it is?
Yep.
All right, very good.
You guys want to, so I got to go back to one...
Are motions on them?
Yeah, give me one second though. I just want to go back to this one for a second. So Dave was mentioning something with, uh... Is this supposed to be not permitted, or is this conditional use?
Not permitted.
It used to be not permitted. It's supposed to be, should be crossed out, the N should be...
Highlighted.
And the C should be underlined.
No, it's all backwards. Move away. All right. So everything's been changed and saved, and you guys can vote and do whatever you got to do.
Should we see your final verbiage for the second one?
Yep, go right back to it here. Yeah, the public, yeah.
We ended the public hearing, sorry.
So you want a motion?
Yes, sure. Which one you want to make a motion on first?
This one.
Okay.
I move, uh, we send forward the water quality protection change at 5.21 in the ordinance as rewritten. I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? All right.
Jason, would you read that final, for water quality? It's difficult to read.
The one that they're moving forward is no person shall bury any animal remains or permit the burial within 100 feet of a source of potable water or within 100 feet of a natural water body within the shoreland and resource protection districts. Yep.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, send forward the changes to the land use chart at 2.7.5 E and F, with the wording in F as changed this evening.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed?
And Joyce, the change to this one is filling, grading, or other earthmoving activity greater than or equal to 1,000 cubic yards per year is a conditional use permit.
That's it. Forward to 98 Cottage Lane, map 117, lot 0044, application agreed as practical extent.
So Tyler, you can explain what you brought back.
You guys were just looking for a distance on the survey, um, from center of road.
Yep.
Which Line Pro provided at 50.1 feet, um, which still gives me my minimum of 20 foot from the septic clearance. And then you guys didn't need this on there, but I showed the garage distance from the water and then showing that that's no closer as well.
So the biggest change is the position of the garage?
He had to make the garage conform with the setback from the water.
Yep.
Well, yeah, that was saying the same distance, what you said anyway, but yeah, just showing the 50 from the road is the main thing.
And you're proposing to go down from 28.2% lot coverage to 24?
24.2, yep.
You're not really doing anything with the water sign of the property, the decks and everything down there.
Um, well, it says deck, that's a dock, that small...
Oh.
Deck in the side, um, disappears. Um, I showed in the...
That one disappears?
Yeah, that all, because all that blue is coming... That's technically going out and not going back in, but all the blue is going away. So, that's why I'm further from the water, I'm getting the 18 feet.
Oh, I see that, yeah.
I couldn't even find that on the permitted, so I just, I didn't count it on anything, and it just disappears.
Yeah, yeah.
On the town card.
Yeah. Okay, so that is a, that is a dock?
Yep.
Not a deck? Looks good to me, huh?
You gonna make a motion?
Uh, sure. I'll make a motion, we accept the application for a greatest practical extent of Tom and Lee Cabista, 98 Cottage Lane, map 117, lot 44. With the, uh, instructions provided.
Uh, 18 and a half feet from the front of the, to the water, is that what it was?
Eight, I think it's 18.
18 feet from the front?
No closer than 18 feet from the high water.
Yep.
And the garage to be no closer than 13.9? Uh, 33.9?
And the old garage area to be re-vegetated, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is it on cement pad right now, or?
No, it's on post, but it's gonna be all re-vegetated, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we have to, the conditions added onto my motion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Restated, or?
Yeah. Probably restated, that way it's clearer for public.
All right. I'll make a motion that we accept the application for greatest practical extent of Tom and Lee Cabista, 98 Cottage Lane, map 117, lot 44. That the new house be located no closer than 18 feet to the high watermark. The garage be located no closer than 33.9 feet. And that the old garage location be re-vegetated.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, coming back.
My player. Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Fifty percent for me?
Yeah.
I gotta, I'm just splitting it all, but I just want your signature. Please, thank you.
All right, come on.
Every single one's a...
You know?
All right, next up is Megan Jo Hickie, 153 Fulton Road, map 118, lot 033. Application for a greatest practical extent.
Hey. Just back again, um, as you remember, it was a, looking to do a tear-down rebuild. Homeowners would like to use the exact same footprint, um, and go up with their 30% that they haven't used. There was a motion last time to be no closer than 14 feet from the high watermark. We weren't positive on the location of the new septic that was installed in 2019, so Jason and I went back the following day, um, and actually located it. It turns out it's 10 feet from the current foundation, um, allowing only two feet that the foundation could come towards it to the eight-foot limit, um, without having to, uh, redo where the septic is placed, um, for the, uh, current footprint to be used. Um, so, I was hoping to, if we could reconsider, to, um, technically 11.3 feet from the high watermark, um, if you wanna make a round number, it'd have to be 11 feet. And that way there, the, uh, expense, expense of, um, changing the septic tank, pumping it out, moving the location with the risk of it breaking, uh, doesn't have to be where it's a new septic that was installed in 2019, it's all up to code and, uh, engineered for, for its current location. We'd also like to leave it, the site pretty much where it's at, uh, for the least environmental impact.
So, it's currently at nine feet, 9.3 feet from the high water?
Yes.
And we can get, with that two feet, we can get 11 now?
Yeah.
11.3.
So, the state ma, the minimum distance for full foundation is eight feet from a septic tank?
Yeah.
Is what, where they're allowed to, to go?
Right now, we're at 10, so we got two, two feet that the house can, can be moved back, the location of it can be moved back without having to disturb the current septic.
What do you think?
Well, considering it's a full tear-down and rebuild, I think they can easily reconfigure to pull it back over three feet, and we don't really need to consider it. That's, that's what I think. I mean, the whole house is being redone, so just redesign the layout slightly would gain... That's kinda what we came up with last time, too.
What, were we 14? What, what did we remove?
Yeah, we wanted to go from 9.3 to 14 even, we said.
And he's asking for 11.3. So, he doesn't have to move anything.
We don't have to get into the whole septic.
We don't need to move the tank, you can just, so you reconfigure the layout of the house, the whole new build. Probably even get more, more distance up onto the left side.
The left side's a, is a large knoll, if you can remember from the pictures, it's, it's, uh, it goes up a good 20, 20 feet up from, from the, uh, site elevation.
This part, right?
Uh, no, like, it's, it's fairly close to that, where that stone wall, um, at the bottom of the hill's located on the...
Oh, yeah.
Uh, that, that, um, incline is, is quite dramatic, and there's all trees throughout that. So, where the, the intention of the homeowners is the, they don't really wanna change the site, so to speak. They don't wanna cut a bunch of trees that they don't need to, they don't wanna be doing a bunch of digging and raw ground that's never been touched before, so they're trying to stay into, that's all, you know, the footprint that's already been disturbed, um, remove, replace.
I can go get the flash drive if you guys wanna see the photos again, I didn't even think about, I was trying to rush up here. So, if you guys wanna see photos again, I can go grab that.
We're talking less than three feet, I don't think it's gonna be that much different.
I mean, did you look at the design of the, the building to see if you could get that extra two feet?
I mean, they, they, without doing dramatic change, their, their hopes were to, to use the current footprint that's there. Um, the design of the building would be based off that, and they just, they just wanted to add to the top of the, of the building and not spread out while utilizing the, the 30% that they're allotted.
Too bad we can't get up on the screen, Jason.
I, I can go get the stuff.
Oh, just...
Yeah, that's what I was saying a second ago.
We can just vote on it, huh?
Make a motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we stick with the last, last week's determination for Megan Jo Henkley, Hickley, 153 Fulton Road, map 118, lot 30. Application for a greatest practical extent, that the building be relocated no closer than 14 feet from the high watermark.
Any second? Well, I'm, so we have a little discussion here. I'm willing to second that, but I'd like to ask them to, they haven't looked to see what they can do to the house. And, um, I guess I would, I would like to ask them to do that, to look at the house and see if you can get two feet, get that extra two feet.
I, I know just on, on the current, okay, on the current design, that it wouldn't be possible. That's kinda what the whole point was. You know, I was, the 14 feet, if the tank was back enough, we, we would've made it work. Um, now that the, the septic's there, they're gonna have to either move the septic or they're gonna have to, um, reconfigure their whole design and not, and not keep the same footprint that they currently have. You know, I could see if it was an old tank or something like that, and it was worthwhile moving, but it's, uh, you know, they, they recently had it done with, before they had intentions of actually doing something like this, and, uh, now it's there, and so it's a rather large tank as well, so, um, you know, picking up, spinning it, all that stuff, it's gonna be at a great risk of cracking and having to be replaced, and...
Well, I think what we're contending is you could get the two feet with the design of the house. I know they don't want to change the design, but, uh, it doesn't seem to me like, well, I think you might be able to find the two feet if you looked at it.
Redesigning it, yeah, I'm, I'm su, I mean, they can go with a narrow house and...
So, is that a second to run?
Um, well, I was having some discussion before I sec, before I, I mean, that's gonna close the door on them.
We just did this last week.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, what's different is that it's not 23 feet from the tank.
Yeah, we, we didn't have, we didn't have the information of the exact location of the tank beforehand, so we went out, we, we determined that, we were able to find that it is 10 feet away, meaning that we could, we had two feet that it could move without having to drastically change their, their, uh, their layout, their footprint. It was their hopes, just, you know, to, to work off of that footprint, they're, they're happy with how the house is, they just wanna go up with it, but the current structure is not to date, um, you know, from the foundation to the undersized, um, framing all the way up, so it's, it, it doesn't make sense to add on top of it at this, at this point.
Chairman, I think you should call for a vote.
Wait another second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? All opposed? Three to one.
Three to one?
Two to one. Oh, yes, sorry.
So, that leaves it at the 14?
It does.
All right.
Did anyone get a chance to look at these waiver request forms?
Did.
Probably did, at least. The waiver request form.
Yeah, I didn't bring anything, I didn't, yeah, um, you can go ahead and talk about them, I don't have them on this computer, but you guys can have discussion about them. I don't want, I don't, I don't, I'm just gonna talk about them.
Well, there are a couple of changes.
Okay.
Some of the paragraphs are wrong.
Yeah.
How many of them are there, two or?
Two. Two, I still haven't done the third one, I've been, I've been, um, dealing with other issues this week.
Oh, yeah, no, I just, I figure if we comment on them, then it'll just...
Sure.
Facilitate getting it done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it, why did you put subdivision in the title, or?
That was one of mine, I kinda...
It probably, I probably just missed it, I gotta do one for subdivision, I gotta do one for, um, land, uh, for condition use and one for site plan, it, these are extremely preliminary, whatever you're catching can be changed, nothing is...
I think all we need there is name of project, you know, and site and some of the changes. And then underneath, we have, there, and then, I was gonna say, I'm starting to go over there, I'm gonna just, I have this one on.
Yeah.
Districts, I mean, a lot of them are in districts.
Yep.
So, name of project, end site, or no, nothing, just project? So name of project and site, or nothing, just project?
And then the next line, I was just gonna suggest it just say site on the next line, so it'll be name of proj, you know, date received, name of project, site, map and lot.
Zoning district.
Zoning district. It's plural.
Yep.
I thought the paragraph numbers were wrong, but I was looking at the check sheet, the check sheet has different paragraph.
Oh, yeah.
And what's actually in the book, so the numbers are okay. On the site plan, I think the same thing, take out the subdivision and.
Yeah, I did.
And then the. The submission requirement should be 6646 through 66463 vice 93.
6646.
Yeah, through 664.
493.
463.
6393?
Not 93.
I think I pulled them out of the.
Oh, wait a minute.
Regular ordinance, not.
I take that back. Let me take that back. I stopped too soon. Yeah, okay, that's all right.
Okay, so the 66461 through 66493 is correct.
Well, it's really 6646.
Okay, I'll scratch the one, and I'll leave the 93.
Yes.
The rest of the verbiage seems to be okay?
I think, I think so.
Yeah, I'm all right with it.
And then the, the subdivision one, I'll have for the next meeting, I just, like I said, I've been, had some stuff going on, but the, it's gonna be very similar to this one. It's just gonna outline which, which sections, and, you know, they can take it from there. Because if I go and start dealing with the subdivision and listing everything, I'll have two pages. I'll revise these, get you new copies, I'll have the third copy for, I'll have the subdivision one, and then we'll see about getting them so that they're in, in circulation. In your, your, we're not, are gonna really have much discussion about it, I just gave you some emails that have been coming through my office that people have asked me to submit. There's probably gonna be agenda, some of these people would like to come in and talk about maybe possible board exchanges for next year, things like that, where the board can handle that one, but right now, I asked to give me some, a little bit of time with that, but we're gonna, we're working with them. And every time, and I'll get you more, there's, I've had more come in today that asked the board to be seen, and I'll get, check your emails, too. I know, I know some of you don't have them, but you don't check them, but you can come in and get the copies, but I'll make sure, every time I get somebody that asks me to submit, forward it to the planning board, I'll make sure that you guys get a copy of it, and then you can go through with it. On that note. Some good reading material and stuff. And I'll, I'll talk with Chris on when to, we can put them on the agenda, but they were looking to make some changes this year, as I can't happen, I can't do it, unfortunately.
Possibly they're gonna do a second, second town meeting of some sort of like a.
Yeah, you could do a special town meeting.
Well, I mean, combine it with the school or something.
When is that, we don't, do we?
I don't know.
Yeah.
That does happen. Other than that, it'll be next year.
Yeah.
It's all good.
You done?
Yeah.
I move where you're drawing, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Thank you.